Discussion on the site. Paul McLeod.
Yeah, the reason why I pulled that is again that I've got a question of granted, why the property owner is willing to just let us use that for public parking, I don't know. Sure, there's gotta be something down the pipe for that. However, how much use is this parking lot going to use considering where it is located? And even though we're not being charged as far as leasing it or anything, there is still maintenance of the parking lot. Granted, probably not plowing or anything for the short term if we only have it through August, but even if it continues on after that, there's a lot of man hours, you know, that we're using to plow that lot and everything else. And what benefit to what area is this parking lot going to give us as far as parking? I can understand it parade day and fesudays possibly, you know, but is this going to alleviate our parking problems at Pearl and Riverside? Because it's a lot closer to the park at Riverside Pearl than it is for this parking lot. I mean, just kind of questioning what our benefits are. There is cost to the city, I mean substantial cost because it's being donated as far as for use, but there is still the maintenance of the parking lot as well as the liability that we would be picking up. And I was kind of wondering what staff's reasoning was on this as far as what that parking lot gives us.
I'd like to say, I mean, the reason we actually going around with each Alderman and going around different parking lots are all the women, sorry. So we went around each parking lot and found out different areas. And obviously, the parking situation, if I'm not mistaken, was brought up by you that we need more parking and figure out where we can find parking. Alderman Schaefer, since he is in this area, suggested this parking lot. So I thought it was a great opportunity. And also, it's a great opportunity for putting snow there during the winter because we're running out of spots to put snow. The building that I now own used to be a spot to put snow. And no longer are they putting snow there. So if I'm not mistaken, Director Hopson, is that correct?
That's true.
Yes. So not only is it just for parking, but it's an opportunity to push that snow in that downtown area and then remove it from that parking lot after the fact, after the snow, just like we just recently encountered. So I think it's a great opportunity. Yes, if we only use it three times a year, we will use it. And I think once we put signs, signage to it, I think Pat Gorniak was looking to put signs there once this is approved, so that's an opportunity, Thursday nights in the park. I just think after this whole discussion on parking and we have an opportunity to take a property that is right off of Pearl, the main downtown area, I guess it's a little off the beaten path, but I think it's a great opportunity for us to take this agreement, so. Paul McLeod.
For clarity, not to correct your mayor, but to clarify what you said, I'm the one that brought up parking issues, okay? And my biggest problem with parking was the fact that we have a plan for the future. And that's the fact that, number one, some of our parking that we have right now was not really accommodating to the average resident. And we have taken steps now for that. But the fact that we have, but my issue more than anything else is the fact that we can't look at, because we have leased areas that are temporary parking areas that if they get redeveloped, we lose. And my concerns on parking for the downtown area more than anything else is that we have control of parking that we will need for the future. And short-term leases is not that solution. So again, the way you explained it, and I guess as far as where we can pile snow in there and everything else, I just don't know if that really cuts it completely. But it is, it's one of the pluses, I guess, of having it. And I guess we'll just have to wait and see. That doesn't mean you take all your trucks and park them there now so that everybody's using it, you know? But let's monitor it and see what happens by August. Thank you.
Paul McLeod.
I thought it was a great asset. I know the bank in the past has been willing to be very community-minded and were willing to offer that. And, you know, we're not having to buy it, we're not having to demolition or create the spot, it's there. And for the minimal upkeep on it, I think it's a great asset, especially during fesudays and potentially also during our St. Patrick's celebration. So and is it the most highest priority location? Maybe not, but they're not charging us. I think that's great. It's a, to me, it's a win-win for the city, so.
Paul McLeod.
Yeah, I agree. I was the one who brought this to the attention of everybody because it's actually one of the most visible areas we have. It's not behind anything, it's on one of our major roads into the downtown area. And it, again, I think we're, all of our Thursday night events at the park, it's within several blocks of the Riverside and Pearl Street location that has been brought up as a location that there is some issues or concerns over. But again, I think it's all positive in the fact that it's adding to our downtown parking inventory. See anything negative about it.
Paul McLeod.
Yeah, just the fact that, again, my concern's more than anything else is that we weigh positives and negatives. And again, it wasn't so much that I was totally against it, but I just wanted to see what the reasoning was. You know, it's easy to say that, well, they're just letting us use it for nothing. But again, the fact that we do have to maintain it, there is some cost to us. And I just want to make sure that the use is worth what it's costing us to do.
Sure. Paul McCurry.
Well, I was gonna ask the question, I asked an earlier question, staff answered, but I was gonna ask the question, is per closed normal maintenance, right? Normal wear and tear, we're not responsible for that. It's only damage.
Right.
So I mean, the only real cost to us, from what I can see, is putting up signs. Because the insurance, I had a question on insurance, but we're self-insured, it doesn't add anything to our insurance cost, so that's not a.
And the lot's in the change.
I mean, I was saying the lot's in the change. I mean, I guess when I read it, and that's why I wanted to clarify, I mean, we're really not responsible for normal maintenance.
Not for normal, only damage.
Only for some recur or something. Right, somehow we damaged the snow, right? Okay.
And also, let's face it, this might be the nicest lot we kind of have in the downtown area as far as maybe goes. That's not, you know, so. Paul McLeod.
Yeah, for clarification, though, it's more than just signs because, and I don't have a crystal ball, but it could, they have a blizzard on R-16. And shit, we have to maintain that parking lot. I know, sounds crazy, but hey, you never know what could happen. I mean, I've seen blizzards in April, so it could happen. And the weird year we've had with weather this year, who knows? But again, I just think it was good for discussion and I'm glad to see that we've got some thoughts on it and everything else. And it'll be interesting to see just how much use we can get out of it.
Sure. Any other discussion by council? Clerk, please call it over.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderwoman Condon.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is individual action item 6A, to authorize the mayor to sign a real estate purchase agreement and all necessary closing documents relating to the city purchase of two vacant parcels of land generally at, generally at the southwest corner of Route 120 and Curran Road with PIN number 09-28-400-010, 20.10 acres, and PIN number 09-28-300-011, 4.66 acres for an amount not to exceed $170,000. Open up this for discussion by council first, and then we'll go to the public and then back to the board. Alderman Curry.
Yeah, just a quick comment, I brought this up earlier. You know, the motion indicates for an amount not to exceed, but it doesn't necessarily just indicate the price. Obviously, the total amount we spend is going to be more than that, right? Because we're going to have closing costs and we don't know what the number is yet. So I guess my only real question is, does the motion, I mean, I think everybody understands that, but does the motion satisfy that?
Actually, what I think the motion should be along those same lines, but it should be, we now have a fixed price. The actual purchase price for the property is $168,100. And the way, $168,100, and the way that's derived, we have an appraisal of $212,000. We had an agreement that the, who's been very reasonable, by the way, has agreed to a price of 1, 80% of that, or $169,600. And from that, he's going to contribute $1,500 toward those costs, which brings it to $168,100 plus closing costs. So the motion should probably be to approve a contract in the amount of $168,100 plus closing costs. That would be right on point. And I don't think it'll exceed it, but it's going to be very close to $170,000.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, it's the southeast corner?
Did I say?
It's written southwest.
Okay. It's on the southeast corner, right? Got it.
That must be a clarifier. Just kidding. So it's the southeast corner for $168,100 plus closing costs.
Sure. Any other discussion on this item by council? Paul McLeod.
All I want to say is I'm grateful to the property owner that we're buying this from, the fact that he'd go out and try and gouge us and that I think we're getting a fair market value for it. And I just appreciate where we're going.
Absolutely, he's remarkable. I don't know who he is, but he's been great since the beginning.
Any other discussion? This time I'm going to ask the public if they have any discussion on this item. I see none. This time, looking for a motion by council to authorize the mayor to sign a real estate purchase agreement and all necessary closing documents relating to the city purchase of two vacant parcels of land generally at the southeast corner and of Route 120 and Curran Road with PIN numbers 09-28-400-010 and PIN numbers 09-28-300-011 for an amount not, for the amount of $168,100 plus closing costs. Alderman Curry.
Sure.
Second. Alderman Santee.
I will second the motion.
Discussion on this item? Clerk, please call it over.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderwoman Condon.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik.
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda is discussion item 7A, fiscal year 1819 through fiscal year 2223, capital improvement program. I think how we're going to go ahead and set this up is I'll go through each fund and ask for any questions, any, we have staff here from Public Works in full force here, so if there's any questions regarding Public Works, we definitely have the staff here to answer those questions along with all the directors from all the other funds. So I'll start off with general funds, CIP. Is there any questions, discussion on this item? Good, moving on? No, I'm just kidding. Paul McCurry.
Yeah, I, the item on Timothy Lane Clover Avenue water main replacement, when we had our prior discussion, maybe I'm not recalling incorrectly, but I thought we were going to, the part we would normally repair to the street for just doing water main, that part of it would be in the water fund, essentially out of our water fund, and the rest of the street repair would be in our streets program? And maybe I'm not remembering correctly, that I thought that's what we had.
Yeah, as we move forward through the SEPI document in the water or utility fund, there's a portion in there that pays for the water main install and the patching.
So that does include it, okay.
Yeah, we did separate it out like we were.
Okay, I knew there was another item there, I just didn't realize it included that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions and discussion on general fund? Take your time.
Yes.
Paul McCurry.
I'm having a flip throw. On the downtown parking access improvements, I don't really have a question on the project itself. We talked about eliminating the expansions that we were no longer going to, at least in this current budget, we weren't going to do that. I guess the question is, we, as a comment for now, not really for us, but since we're not going to do those expansions, should we put a hold on the engineering for them as well? Because we approved that a while back to actually, I think it's $30,000 or $35,000 of engineering involved in those two parking lots.
My thought on that, and I think Bill would probably agree, that we want to move forward with the design. In case we do lose some parking areas down there, that they're shovel-ready projects, they won't change the design at all, even if we would hold off. So our recommendation would be to continue and have them ready to go.
But of course, I'd assume that we are going to end up doing those lots, and I guess I'm not clear that we're going to do that at this point.
I think we're better safe than sorry to have them ready to go. That's staff's opinion.
Correct. Paul McSante.
So if I understand you correctly, the engineering won't change in regards to numbers. Once it's done, it's done, whether it starts this year or it's, or we do part of this project in, say, two or three years.
Right.
In regards to parking engineering.
We're planning on doing the lighting upgrades.
Yes.
But the two expansion, which is Court Street parking lot, where the water division garage was.
Yeah.
And then the additional parking down Riverside Drive on that lot we own. We would design those, but not construct them this year, but have them as shovel-ready projects. So the need did come up that we needed, we're that much ahead of the game that we could go right out to bid to get them constructed.
And as we move forward with these lots, we'll be looking at these, I don't know how it says, but like on an individual basis where we know we're going to be doing this one lot, that we're going to light it, we're going to get that one done and then move on to the next. I mean, you know, there's some concerns in regards to what I'm thinking about is that is everything a must immediately? And that's, and that's my thinking. I mean, I, but that's, that's what I'm looking at. And I just want to make sure that, you know, once we get to the point of getting to Court Street, getting to some other, we may, we may make some adjustments on the fly here where we suddenly find out some other pieces that could be good potential parking areas that we don't know about today. And I just want to make sure, shovel-ready is great, you know?
And they could be constructed as standalone projects.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Something I'd like to mention, too, I met with, I met with staff, and something that when we pulled out the enhancements of the paving and construction infrastructure of the parking lots, in that was to remove Ned Newman's buildings, on Newman Park, not Ned Newman's building, but on Newman Park, there's two buildings that are on that property that are, you know, have no historic value. Pat works for Landmark Commissioning, I called and made sure of that before I, we decided to do that. But I think those buildings should come down. I think it opens up that opportunity to show where there's parking, you can light it up nicely. I know Pat Gorniak can do something, you know, in the back where that is located and kind of make it so it's an appealing place to seat, sit, or, you know, to.
Walk through.
To walk through. So I think that's something that we should really consider to add into that lighting. I know this is a last-minute thing and it doesn't have to be talked about now, but I think that's something that should be discussed. So I just wanted to bring that up. Paul McCurry.
I'm fine with that. Just take the, take the money for designing parking lots that we don't know we're going to need and use that to do what you have to do there. I mean, I just don't understand why we would expend, I think it was $30,000 or $35,000 for something that we certainly don't have to have this year and potentially not next year. And shovel-ready is great, too, but it doesn't take, you wouldn't think it would take that long to engineer a parking lot. So I don't see that we're behind the eight ball if we, if we hold off on doing that.
That's just my opinion. I think they're pretty well along on the design.
Okay.
So Miller Point, we're working with somebody on that property, and one of these lots is adjacent to that. So with the opportunity of this, and it would come, you know, pretty quickly, that would be an opportunity to have that lot ready to go as well. So that's something that I would strongly consider as well. And honestly, if it happens, you know, there would be, you know, agreements that we would work out with the new development. But I think it's an opportunity to have that ready and ready to go out for bids so that way we can work that agreement out with the developers as well. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Hence the, oh, sorry.
No.
Hence the reasoning for the shovel readiness of those in case there was development or other businesses that were looking to do something.
That will impact it, for sure. Any other questions regarding general fund? Paul McLeod.
Is the Green Street bridge work under this?
Yes.
Okay. The only question I had on that is that, did we ever look into anything for grant funding on working on that, or is that not a, because of the age of it? And is there any historical value and things like that to that bridge?
I don't know anything about the historical value of granting for that, but as far as federal funding to repair the bridge, it's not restricted, you know, on loads or weight and would qualify for any federal funding under that.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't think it had much historical value. I was just stretching to make the same thing. Maybe Pat could find some, anybody could.
Director Schmidt.
And then I just have one question for the final CIP then. Do we want to come up with a budget number to remove those two buildings at Newman Park? Should I include that in the final document?
Everyone agree with that, is that okay to do that? All right, so I'll put a number.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I think there's like two or three more steps that could be made after that, but.
Right. I think that's the first step.
I'm sorry. Yeah, wasn't, wasn't that included in our, all of the lighting improvements and things like that? Did we have that in the verbiage or no? Okay.
No, that was separate. If I'm not mistaken, right? Director Schmidt, it was separate? That was in the actual paving and, I don't know if we had those numbers actually in there at the beginning.
You know, I think we did at one point, I know the Court Street for sure. And then when we were looking at the Newman Park possible parking, we had it in there and then that went away.
Right, I think that's where it stopped.
It's on page 40, 43, 176 of ours, page 43 of the actual document. It is, it is not in there, you're right.
Yeah, I think we just pulled it.
And I did conduct the phase one study for asbestos and lead, so I know what we have to put in for that also.
Okay, nice, if you could do that, Director Schmidt, that'd be great. All right. Any other discussion on general fund? I see none. Moving over to IT fund. Any discussion or questions? No. No discussion on this item, everyone's okay? I'll make sure before I move forward. All right, next item, developer donation fund. Paul McCurry.
Yeah, I'm just curious, we have city gateway signage on here, and then later in the document, the rest of the years, so that's this year, and then the subsequent years, it's the same amount, $25,000 each year, and it's in the tourism fund. And I guess I'm just curious as to why this year is in developer donation and the out years are in tourism.
Well, we, we did have 20,000, was 20 or 25 as part of the Ricky Rockets agreement. I'm not sure why it's listed the way it is. It was part of a developer agreement that the developer would install it when they started construction, so it just may be how it's listed.
So the sign for this year was part of an agreement, basically, and so.
Yeah, they're going to start in the spring.
I mean, it's 25 here, 25 there, I was just curious.
Yeah, and it may go into two fiscal years, actually.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Paul McLeod.
Yeah, just on the gateway signs, really too crazy about the fact that we do too much with our gateway signs in certain areas of the city, considering there's still possibilities of annexation and expansion in certain directions. Johnsburg was quite sensible as far as the fact that they knew they weren't coming any further south, so they put some beautiful-looking signage up and really nice gateway-type entranceways. And I think we should concentrate on areas like that to where we're locked in and we're not going to expand over there. And that's where we shouldn't be spending the money as far as beautifying the entranceways into our city at this time until we know where we're going with the other areas. I don't really want to spend too much money on entranceways. I think we should spend more money in the areas that were locked in as far as the areas that we have.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions? Moving on to recreation center fund. No questions, no comments? Tourism fund? Water and sewer? Paul McCurry.
Just, I'm sure we probably brought this up before, but we have this water tower of number four that we're having, experiencing paint delamination. And I'm sure it's long, it's long past time that we could get anything from the vendor. Did we ever try to do that? I'm just curious. I mean, if they painted a water tower and we got delamination, seems like there was a failure there somewhere.
Yeah, I think we had like a two-year guarantee on that.
Two years.
Yeah, great, okay.
Any other questions, comments? See none? TIP CIP? All right, any other questions regarding all the funds? All right, I see none. Next item on the agenda is staff reports. Is there any staff reports this evening? See none. Mayor and City Council comments. DC Cobb's is now fully open, so that's a positive thing for downtown. So just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Is that what's food service now?
Food service, well, yeah, I saw a post about 30 minutes ago that they started food, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a full go now, so good for our downtown and look forward to other businesses coming in, and it'll be good, so. Any City Council comments? Paul McLeod.
I had multiple snow plowing compliments with, for the most part. I had one issue on Main Street that was called in and to me had been taken care of the next day. And I know that it has a lot to do with the timing and we got that one snow that started at like 10:00 at night and went to 5:00 AM. So that's a real tough time for that stuff. But for the most part, very positive comments.
Paul McLeod.
Yeah, as long as we're talking about snow plowing, I think we need to look at how the state's doing, 31 and 120. We need to put a little pressure on the state, you know, I take 31 down, going down to Crystal Lake. Lake in the mornings sometimes and after snowfall, seems like it's, you're going through the city of McHenry, it's kind of spotty here and there and then you, as you go further south, once you get out of the city, it just seems to open up completely now. Is that because of more running traffic? I don't know, but it just seems like things are so much cleaner further south than what we have here in the city. And again, traffic sometimes helps dissolve all that, I understand, but if nothing else, we ought to just keep an eye on it for the near future.
I agree with you.
Because that's where, that's where most of our complaints come about plowing, or a good portion is, and it's always the state and people don't realize that, that isn't, you know, our responsibility and our responsibility is to get everybody to those, those mainways when we have the snow and it's the state to open those things up, so.
Any other comments from council? All right, look for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Alderman Santee?
I'll make, I'll make that motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second? Alderman Schaefer?
Second.
Clerk, please call it over.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderwoman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
[inaudible].